Seven o'clock, let's call to order the Wednesday, August 26, 2020, meeting of the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission. Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Henningham?
Here.
Commissioner Marhul? Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
And Chairperson Mateo?
I'm here.
All right.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting of June 24, 2020?
Remove. Seconds.
Any edits, any changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstained? All righty. Moving on is our village trustee here. Do not see our liaison. Director App, do you have any update from the village board? Okay. Moving on, we'll call to order public hearing, PZ 20-03 and PZ 20-04 regarding 100 Blooming Bank Road, a public hearing to consider an application to expand an existing special use and for several variations from the bulk permitted encroachment, deck and fence requirements of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance to allow the construction of a new clubhouse on the site in the R1A single-family residence district, as well as associated new swimming pools and sport court improvements. The petitioner is the Riverside Swim Club. Commissioner Marhul is going to recuse himself. The other members are still present from our roll call. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public notice was published in the Landmark, August 5, and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. All persons who are anticipating giving testimony during this public hearing, if you're going to speak at all during the public hearing, please stand if you are able to be sworn in and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge? Yes? Okay, thank you. Director App, will you start us off?
Yes. So, we have the Riverside Swim Club here proposing to rebuild their facility. The existing swim club is considered outdoor recreation, is considered a special use in our R1A zoning district. The proposed demolition of the existing clubhouse and the small shed, as well as removal of the existing pool area, to build a new clubhouse, as well as the swimming pool and sport court on the site. This is considered an increase in the intensity of the existing use and therefore requires special use approval. The... The proposed new clubhouse and pools are going to be located in approximately the same area as the current facility is located. They are not proposing any changes to the parking lot, other than to stripe the additional handicap parking spaces that they need in order to meet the ADA requirements. The new clubhouse is set back approximately 35 feet from the street. That would be their south property line. It will be one-story with a maximum peak height of 36 feet. It has approximately 7,000 square foot footprint. This new one will have board and batten engineered wood siding, has a pitched roof with architectural shingles. It will contain offices, a snack bar, a large community space, along with the required locker rooms and bathrooms and showers. There will be a large deck off of the community room and snack bar area that's located on the south and east sides of the building that will separate the eating area from the pool deck. The project also includes new pool areas and sport court. The existing pools will be replaced with the two new pools, a zero-deep pool and a deep pool for diving and laps. They will also be replacing the existing sport court with a new one. The pool and sport court area will be fenced off. The proposed pools and pool deck area will extend and shift south from where they're currently located, thus reducing the open space along Blooming Bank Road. The clubhouse and associated pool and sport courts do not meet the bulk requirements of the R1A zoning district and will require several variations which we're going to go through here. First, we'll start with our existing conditions. So, the existing clubhouse encroaches into the required rear yard from the north property line. That setback is actually only 0 feet. The required setback is 36.9 feet. The existing impervious surfaces exceed the maximum 50% allowed in the R1A district. Their existing coverage is actually 76.8%. Their existing fence encroaches into the required street yard. The existing fence ranges from 8 feet to 10 and 1/2 feet height as it kind of goes around the site. And the existing sport court is set back only 21.75 feet from the street lot line and 0 feet from the side lot line, therefore requiring, or they don't meet the code as it is, they're not allowed to encroach into the street yards, and sport courts are required to have a minimum 5-foot setback from side property lines. Currently, their existing parking lot only has one handicap space, and since they have 68 spaces, two handicap spaces are required. The proposed improvements have them continuing some of these requirements. They will be shifting the building away from that north rear property line, but it will still encroach into that required setback. It will be about 3.25 feet from the rear property line, and as I said before, the required rear yard is 36.9 feet. The impervious surface in total of the pool, the buildings, the sport court, and along with the existing parking lot, which is remaining the same, is going to exceed the 50% as well. In fact, it will be bumping up to 78.4% of the lot area. However, their new improvements, with their new improvements, they are required to provide onsite detention and volume control in accordance with the MWRD Watershed Management Ordinance requirements. So, they are proposing two underground storm water storage vaults, one that's under the sport court area and one that is in the green space by the flagpole area. These vaults will connect directly to our village's storm sewer system and will have volume control to control the rate with which the water enters our storm sewer system. So, the new sport court is going to encroach into both the street yard and the side yard, and that would be on the east side, adjacent to the commuter parking lot still. As I said before, they are not allowed to encroach into street yard, and they have a minimum 5-foot setback from side yards. The existing sport court already encroaches. The new one will be set back only approximately 1 foot from both the street property line and the side property line. The new clubhouse deck also encroaches into the required street yard. The deck that I talked about, that will be the eating area, is located on the south side of the building, so it does encroach into the required street yard, and decks are not allowed in the required street yard. And then we have the fence, which requires several variations. Fences are not allowed in the required street yard. The existing fence is in the required street yard. The new fence will be in the required street yard, however, it will be closer to that front property line than the current one is. They also require height variations. The maximum height for fences is 6 feet. The existing chain link fence is 8 feet along Blooming Bank and then bumps up to 10, and then 10 and 1/2 feet as it goes around the side and rear property lines. The new fence will be an 8-foot fence along Blooming Bank. It will be an architectural-style fence, so it's going to be kind of like a faux wrought iron sort of aluminum fence. And then on the side and rear, it will be a chain link fence. That fence will be 10 feet in height. Additionally, we do allow a 10-foot fence around a tennis court, so 10-foot is the maximum around a tennis court. However, they're not just doing it around the sport court area, it is enclosing the entire pool area. Then we have the variation from the fence wall and material requirements. While our code does allow a coated chain link fence, it does not permit privacy slating and chain link fencing. They are proposing to have the privacy slating within there, and so they require a variation for that as well. There have been some questions regarding storm water and some of that, and I'm sure they can go over in a little bit more detail, but they are providing the detention, storage according to their storm water report. They are proposing .605 acre-feet of storm water detention onsite, and that's split between the two vaults that they are providing. Additionally, there has been some question about how we calculate and determine impervious surface and whether storm water would count towards that. The way our ordinance is written, it wouldn't. However, the point of providing storm water detention or requiring it is to offset and compensate for impervious surface on a site. So, they're similar but two different types of requirements. So, you have impervious surface that kind of talks about lot coverage, as well as allowing permeability and providing permeability on a lot, whereas storm water is kind of a different ordinance, but it is, when detention is actually required, it is to compensate, and volume control is also to compensate for the amount of impervious surface that's being added to a property. I believe the threshold is a half an acre of disturbance before you have to start providing storm water detention, or at least volume control per MWRD, and they exceed that threshold, and so that's why they're having to provide the detention and the volume control on the site. The other one that comes up is the deck, and I know Chairperson Mateo had asked me how we've treated decks in the past. Typically, a deck is going to count towards impervious surface, especially with existing decks when it comes to calculating coverage. There's not really a way for us to know without going out there and really doing a thorough inspection of knowing whether or not what is underneath it is permeable. But if a deck does have slating or gaps in the slating and has it open underneath so that it can drain into the soil, then it can be considered, pardon me, and in some communities is considered a permeable surface and doesn't count towards your impervious surface. The way our code is written, there is flexibility for the zoning administrator to determine the rate of permeability. So, with a permeable pavers, provided that it's installed per the manufacturer specifications, you get a full credit for using your permeable pavers, and they don't count against your impervious surface calculations. So, if their deck, if they were to do consulting with our engineer, if for their deck, they were to make sure that there is, you know, at least an eighth-inch gap between the boards on the deck, if they do excavate down like 6 inches, pardon me, put down a, like a porous fabric like we talked about with the gravel driveways to ensure we're getting the permeability, and put down 6 inches of gravel under there, he's comfortable saying that is a permeable surface, but that would need to be a requirement for that, for us to not consider that permeable impervious surface. So, in this case, their deck is a little bit over 2,700 square feet. So, if we don't count that towards their impervious surface now, that would actually bring them about 2% under where they are currently. But we would need to make that a condition of approval, that impervious surface, that they have to provide that kind of permeability underneath the deck in order to not count that towards the impervious surface. They're still over, so they still need the variation because they're certainly not at 50%. But I thought I would bring that up as I kind of worked through that with the engineer and kind of going through the permeability of some of the different features. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention, and if, you know, I think it would be important, especially if we're going to take into consideration that the deck does allow some permeability, that we put a condition in there that they do have to do that gravel, the permeable fabric, and then excavating down that 6 inches and provide for that gapping, which I think they've already said that they would have gapping, but just to kind of formalize that. Another thing that I did want to note that I have in here as a condition of approval is that the fire department does want a gate to be added to the fence so that they have access to the, direct access to the pool area without having to go through the building, and that also, since this is a new construction, pardon me, they will have to comply with our radio, what do we call it? Our radio amplification in certain buildings, police regulations, to make sure that our police have the signal that they need at any place within the building for their communications. So, that was a condition. It's a newer ordinance. I think we just have only had it on the books for about, not quite a year yet, but that was a condition for both BLYTH and for AIMS, and so that's also a condition for this one. You have the standards for both the variation and the special uses in your staff report. Their team here is here to answer any questions you have, kind of walk through the project a little bit more, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the code that you have as well.
And since we've received the packet, has the village received any comments?
I received one comment questioning whether an environmental assessment had been done, and they did provide us with that information, so they had done their environmental assessment on the site.
Thank you. All right, let's hear from the swim club.
Do I leave this on?
No, you can take it off.
My first time out in public, about six months. Good evening. My name is Dave Pollard. I'm a local architect, Riverside resident, and Riverside Swim Club family member. I'm not a board member, nor is my company involved in this project, but I beg to be part of the team helping to bring the rebuilding plan to fruition. With ties to the community through our family over the last seven years, as well as the work my company does in town, I felt like I could help support arranging the construction pieces into something wonderful for both the town and the RSC membership. So, here I am today to ask the PZC on behalf of the RSC board and the membership for its consideration of our requested zoning variances. Our team has been developing a plan based on membership feedback and needs for the last 18 months. This is not the first time an RSC board has attempted to rebuild or renovate the facility, which is in dire need of an overhaul, to say the least. But it is the first time that there is a full plan in place with the full backing of the community membership. Today, we come to you with a sense of urgency, though. While we made great headway in the planning, budgeting, and overall design in the last 18 months, we did lose our footing in the spring as the pandemic left the future of the RSC in question. Back in March, in all honesty, zoning regulations were the least of our concerns. Beyond personal matters of the all-volunteer RSC board during the first pandemic in our lifetime, shifting to e-learning for our kids and playing out every doomsday scenario possible in our heads, the board continued to stay the course for contingency plans for opening the pool for the summer, as well as continuing to secure the financing and membership commitment to keep the swim club alive. So, as a result, 468 families signed up by May 1, including 63 new families for the 2020 season, and the current RSC membership now sits at 496 families. This is all during the uncertainty of a pandemic. Looking back, though, this is not that surprising, as when my family and I moved to town seven years ago, we did not have air conditioning, so we immediately joined the RSC. It was and has continued to be a community center for our family and our town, improved even more so during the COVID-19 pandemic. As any member knows, weekend slots are a hot commodity. So, our challenge today, though, is kicking off a very rigorous off-season construction schedule. We are in Chicago, so the winter months can be a crapshoot and a challenge, to say the least. Our plan has been to have the bulldozers lined up on closing day to meet our schedule, but we are way behind on formal zoning approval. With that, we are respectfully asking to be able to resolve any zoning issues at this evening's meeting. Our team is here to field any questions, and we hope to come to a resolution to present to the trustees for approval so that we can keep the RSC alive. So, our team presented to the PZC and Riverside community in June and received some very helpful and constructive feedback. Since that meeting, we've taken a deeper dive into the design as it relates to the zoning variances with the following revisions and clarifications. So, what your original packet had, we've actually made revisions since then to try and support some of the concerns further. All in all, I believe there's seven variance requests that fall for this, and we kind of categorize them into three categories, I guess four. We have the front yard setback issue. We have the impervious surface issue. We have the fence height, and we also have a rear yard setback issue. So, to address each of these individually, I'll start with the front yard setback. So, first of all, we've prepared the following revisions, and that's in the revised submitted packet that I think Sonia handed out to you guys. So, as we looked at the site, we can clearly push the entire facility to the north 3-foot 3. So, you can see here that the pool deck itself is shifted to the north 3-foot 3, which puts this 3-foot 3 off of the south Blooming Bank property line, or where the previous plan was. So, we're, we've already revised it to move the pool deck and the pools 3-foot 3, as well as the deck surface 3-foot 3 to the north, which shrinks the size of the deck a little bit. The question there, though, is it does present a zero lot line, which is part of the rear yard setback requirement, but understanding that that's up against the metro commuter parking lot and the BNSF railroad line, we feel like it's probably better to give that space to the Blooming Bank frontage. And with that, we kept the facility in the same place, or the clubhouse in the same place, so that we still have some relief from the setback for access or any other overdig and construction things that need to be done. So, within that, we have the sport court, so that also moves to the north 3-foot 3. We also have the deck, so that will line up with the 3-foot 3, and then the fence and the front yard setback will move to the north 3-foot 3. On the impervious surface, Director App did a great job, I think, of kind of researching and helping us understand that a little bit better. I think it's on page 4 of the packet and the schedules that we have here. This one. So, what we're attempting to do here is kind of clarify the impervious surface issue. So, the current impervious surface of the facility is 65,531 square feet. What we propose is...
Mr. Pollard, can you talk into the microphone as much as possible?
Absolutely.
I know it's tricky.
So, what we've proposed for impervious surface is 66,583 square feet, but as Director App was talking through, our zoning ordinance for impervious surface doesn't take into account storm trap structures and also open decks. So, we believe that with the intent of impervious surface is to reduce storm water runoff, we're actually taking storm water runoff and putting it into underground detention, as well as taking it through the raised deck into the gravel below. So, with that, that gets us down to 60,711 square feet of impervious surface, which is an improvement over the current facility with an enlarged pool deck and meeting the needs of the current membership. The other portion was the fence height, so the fence height and the materials. So, we re-reviewed this, and we have no problem with an 8-foot architectural fence along Blooming Bank, and then we'd like to keep the 10-foot fence along the east and north yards, which abut the parking lot and the parking lot on both sides, and that's mainly a security issue, is that's where most people would be hopping over, while the 8-foot on Blooming Bank would be less likely to be breached, except maybe by the Giza family, but that's a question for the trustees. And then with the fence slating, it's noncompliant with village standards, as it's not allowed. We haven't improved what is currently the fence, which I believe we have a photo in here. The existing conditions in the front yard you see in the bottom left, and then we will have a new shiny fence with privacy slating, which is for privacy and security. Lastly, from a zoning ordinance perspective, I think it's important to understand that the RSC has resided on a residentially zoned parcel that's abutting the commuter parking and train tracks for nearly 60 years. It's always remained in our zoning district, which is understandable. It's most likely to not allow any high-density developments to encroach on the residential areas of Blooming Bank and Scottswood. But with the residential designation, certainly comes some very specific criteria to maintain the character of the homes throughout the village, which make a facility like the swim club, you know, somewhat unfeasible to exist within a residential zoning district. We believe it makes reasonable sense to maintain the residential zoning designation to preserve the lot, but we think it's also reasonable to allow the variances necessary for the swim club to continue for the good of our community and to be an improvement upon our community. We sincerely appreciate your input and discussion on this matter. We know that this is a unique situation, but it is Riverside, so there are always a lot of those. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pollard at this time?
Can the one table? I think it's the one for the proposed zoning matrix for the new one. There's a reference to concession A in the highlighted area.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear that.
There's a reference to concession A in one of the tables. What is the concession? What does that mean?
Correct, that's the 3-foot 3. That's the revision. That's pushing the facility to the north for the pool deck and pools and sport court north 3-foot 3.
Okay.
On the revised exhibit, I can't quite tell, the fence on Blooming Bank, is that going to be up against the edge of the deck, or will it be on the property line?
No, it's up against the fence line. The fence is up against the edge of the deck.
Okay, so there will be that 6 feet or so of green area outside the fence?
Correct.
Thank you.
I believe, Lauren, do you know what that number is?
So, commissioners, if you want to, you can take your mask off while you're talking if it makes it easier for everybody else to hear and understand you.
I did have some more questions about the storm water issue. I'm not sure who that would be directed to, but the first question for me is the current conditions in the area. Is there street flooding? Are there sewer backups in people's basements in that area? Is there a problem right now with the sewer system in that area?
In the first division, we recently completed a sewer separation project, so there is a separate storm sewer system out there from our sanitary. So, any basement backups that were previously an issue in that area should no longer be an issue in that area because everybody's been separated off from the storm water.
All right. And then another question I had was, for the detention area that you're setting up, how does that actually work, and what is the capacity of that detention compared to the surface area, the impermeable surface area? I mean, is it really just a tiny amount of water that can be retained compared to the amount of water that's being shed off the area?
No, actually, what we showed here is the square footage area, so the actual calculation would be volume, so it's actually more significant, but just on the surface area of the square footage of the floor plan of the storm trap is 3,300 square feet. So, is Mackie here? We don't have our engineers here to speak to all of the, you know, nuances and technicalities of that, but we took the simplest idea, which is it's replacing that amount of runoff. Oh, yeah. This is, we'll show a section. So, up in the top left is what you see for the storm trap. So, it takes on storm water runoff through, I guess, culverts or manholes that direct it into there to reduce the runoff that's going into the street and into the yards, and then stores it in the underground storm trap until it can be dispersed.
Right, and I'm just wondering what the volume of that is, and is there any other part, any other area of the swim club that's being, that water is being sent to that area, or is it only, if you imagine there's a storm cloud over the orange areas, it's only the water, the rainwater that's hitting those orange areas is being retained in the vaulting?
Correct. It's, do we have an engineering plan?
I know.
It's, it's, oh, go ahead, Sonia.
Sorry. The entire improvement area that they are working on is being pitched towards inlets throughout that lead to either of those two storm water traps.
Okay.
Those storm water traps will then connect to a storm sewer line that will then connect to our public storm sewer line out in the street, and there will be volume control that happens on their site before it goes into the village's system.
So, it will be capturing a large, a larger area?
It will be captured. It's required to basically capture their improvement area. That's, that's how it's supposed to be designed.
The improvement area is...
Basically, from the parking lot, the commuter... Basically from the parking lot, the commuter parking lot, going towards their parking lot. That's their area of disturbance.
So the whole sport court area, or the entire pool area?
So the entire pool area, the entire clubhouse area.
It is the entire pool area. We have area drains scattered throughout the pool deck that all drain to the storm trap area.
Okay. And given the amount of large storms we've been having lately, do you have any perceptions to whether that drainage area is going to get full quickly in one of those kinds of storm events?
The area is sized specifically to hold a hundred-year storm for the entire site and be able to function in a hundred-year storm, so it would be able to handle the most significant storm events that you will see in the area.
And what happens if-
Can you hold on a second, please?
Have you been sworn in previously?
I haven't, actually, I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand, is a testimony you gave and are about to continue giving, true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And I'm on Riverside TV's microphone patrol, so please speak a little bit closer to the microphone, if you would, please?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And my last, well, I had two, one more question, one more comment, I guess, is, the question is, what could happen if that area fills, if the vault fills, where would the water be going at that point? And the second question I had was regarding the parking lot, whether you'd given, I think you were going to repave the parking lot, and whether any thought had been given to trying to create some kind of bio swales or more permeable surfaces, you know, in the vegetated areas, because it's a large area to shed rainwater.
Sure. To the first question about where the water would go, should it fill, basically the system would, there is outflow control, so it wouldn't be able to flood the storm sewer, it would actually back up into the site itself.
Into where?
Into the site itself.
And onto the surface of the?
Correct. But the volume within the piping would be the first to fill, which is not all taken into account within the calculation.
And then the second comment was just about whether there was any idea of trying to improve any water through vegetative purposes when you repaved the parking lot, trying to improve the permeability of the area around the-
That I will actually defer to the architect on.
Because you're going to have more or less compacted ground, you know, that can absorb more or less water.
So my name's Lauren Johnson, I'm the architect with Leggett Architects, and the parking lot's not in our scope of work, as it was just repaved not that long ago, and there is no disturbance in that area, so there is no reason for us to kind of disturb that area additionally. Disturbances in the parking lot would accrue additional regulatory burden from MWRD, which we were trying to avoid. Additionally, my colleague reminded me that the bottom of the storm traps are permeable, even though they're, as you can see, the kind of people playing basketball on a hard surface, that portion is not permeable, because the square footage of the storm trap is permeable below ground, that does allow for some infiltration into the groundwater, in addition to the volume control into the village storm sewers.
Can you clarify that for me? So the orange area under, in the sport court, is not permeable, is not permeable?
On the surface, it's not permeable, but below ground, there is permeability of groundwater or water to be able to infiltrate into the ground.
Okay, so no part of that orange area is permeable on the surface?
Right.
And how about that other orange area?
Same situation, it's permeable below ground, but not-
But not above?
Well, actually, in that area, it is, so it's actually grass above the storm trap, so then it's counted as permeable in our calculations.
Okay. And so to clarify, the pervious surface calculation that brings us just below the existing pervious or impervious, that includes both of the orange areas?
No, it only includes the one that hadn't previously been counted, the one at the sport court, because the one closest to the parking lot was already counted as pervious because it's a grassy area.
Right.
So it, the, this calculation, this calculation here, where's the laser? This alternative total pervious, impervious, that takes into account the one under the sport court.
As well as the deck?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Someone said, maybe David or you, but that the entire proposed area drains to those storm traps? The pools don't, don't, correct?
No, the pools don't, because, yeah, there's a separate drainage infiltration system for them, but basically everything from, everything that we're disturbing, so everything kind of this way, that all drains into the two storm traps.
Right. But the calculation for the requirement of the volume does include the area of the pools?
I think it does, actually, because we're disturbing that area, so MWRD counts as it is disturbed, even though it's not a-
And counts it as impervious and?
Yeah.
Okay, so all of that area is included, but the area of the parking lot that you are not disturbing is still completely undetained and not accounted for in the volume?
Correct.
Okay. Are you exceeding the MWRD volumetric requirement or release rate requirement?
We're meeting the code that MWRD has set forth.
So you're meeting the minimum code for MWRD, not exceeding it?
Right.
And only for the disturbed area?
Correct.
Not for the entire site or the entire developed site?
Right.
Well, I have the report in front of me, and they are just slightly exceeding what the requirement is, so, yeah.
Okay. Do you know what the, the surface of the parking lot is as compared to the rest of the impervious?
So the existing parking lot is 24,435. The new parking lot is 24,351, because we're just shaving it off slightly where the new construction is. So 24,435 compared to the total site area of 85,251, and then the total impervious, total new impervious being either 66,583 or 60,711, depending on how you calculate it.
So the parking lot is really about 30% of the site? Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I have one more question, sorry. The fence along Blooming Bank, what will its eventual, what's the dimension from the right-of-way line to that fence? And what's the dimension from the back of curb of Blooming Bank Road to the fence?
I don't have that dimension here.
The back of curb to their property line is 14 feet.
14 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And from the property line to the fence, I'm sorry, what was that?
It's six feet.
Now, it is six feet.
What, existing, or?
No, proposed.
Six feet, yep.
I had a question regarding the height of the proposed fences?
Yep.
So, one question is, what is the reason for having the 10-foot height on the cyclone fence when there's only an eight-foot height on the wrought iron fence? And the second question is, have there been security concerns at the Swim Club historically, with people getting in to jumping the fence?
Yeah, so I'll address the fence height question, then David can answer the kind of history question. So the primary reason for the 10-foot fence along the rear sides is because it's a less visually observed area, being a parking lot, it's more prone to, kind of, there's no people walking by, there's no eyes on the street, that sort of thing. And Blooming Bank Road adjacency being a more high visibility, there's people walking their dogs, there's neighbors, the team felt it was more of a, there could, more of a case could be made that that fence height could be shorter, whereas the mostly unobserved area in the rear and on the side, we felt it should be higher, and I'll turn it over
Yes, I'm told that, I'm told that we have fence jumpers two to three times per year. Believe me, if we could build a four-foot fence, we would love to, it needs to be that height for, for the security purposes.
I was, I was just wondering, because I would think, if you were going to climb a cyclone fence, making it 10 feet doesn't really make it much harder than making it seven feet or eight feet, so it's just going to be a straight vertical, vertical fence, right?
Right, it's, yeah, it's a straight channel fence.
There's no additional way to prevent fence jumpers, there's no additional security measure that's being taken?
I mean, is it a concern to have 10 feet along the parking lot side?
No, to me, it's not a concern. I mean, I don't, to me, I have no problem with it being 10 feet, I'm just wondering, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily going to deter people who really want to get in to climb a 10-foot fence, 10-foot cyclone fence versus a 7-foot fence or a 6-foot fence, that's all.
Sure.
If you get sworn in at the podium, please. Will you raise your right hand? Testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Couple reasons, yes, on the fence jumpers, but we also have kids that play ball on that side of the, of the facility. Basketball's and such going over the court is disruptive and also dangerous. We do not want our kids running out into the street, so that's another consideration. It's both in and out. Thanks.
Oh, is there going to be any kind of a gate in any of that fence in the?
I think they covered, I think they covered the gate question. You want to take that again, Dave?
Can you state your name, please?
Chris Porter, I'm the Swim Club president, thanks.
Got to get things on the record.
Yes, the fire department's asking us to provide a gate, so we'll basically take their guidance on where they would like to have access, would be my understanding.
But there's not a human access gate in and out?
What's that?
There's not a human access gate, so if a ball does go over, a kid can't, like, go through the fence, get the ball?
Correct, yeah, no, you have to go through the facility to get in and out, correct.
For the firefighter access gate, are they looking to access? Are they looking to access off the street or through the parking lot, or?
Sonia, do you have an answer for that?
The fire department wants to work with them, so they'll figure out what the best, the best is when we get into the construction drawings more.
Okay, so you always have to give consideration to the compressive strength of the new permeable parking lot, so you just want to make sure it lines up okay with something like that.
One of the questions or points we raised at the June meeting was to reduce the amount of impervious surface, that was a specific request from this commission. What specifically did the group do, what did you consider to try to reduce it beyond the 2%?
Sure, so we, actually, let me grab my notes here. So I'd say our first step was to really clarify that we were improving the site, because I don't know that that was really clear in the first presentation, because we were using the raw numbers of just simply what's grass and what's not. So we wanted to paint a better picture of what we're actually doing to reduce stormwater runoff. And our understanding is the intent of impermeable surfaces is not even necessarily green space, it can be permeable pavers, it can be a lot of different things, is to reduce that stormwater runoff that ends up in the street or in our combined sewers and all kinds of other things. So I think our first step was just to try and clarify through the drawn sections and through the calculations of, that we're actually providing a reduction in stormwater runoff, and that it's a fair argument to, to argue that for a reduction of permeable surface. Other things that we did look at were effectively shrinking the pool deck, you know, honestly, we wanted to see, you know, what we came up with, is this what we need, is this what we needed to be? And we looked at how we got to where we are today, which is a function of the eight-lane pool. Right now, anyone who goes to RSC knows that the pools turn longways for the laps, or we're more, yeah, we're going west to east. So in order to get the eight laps, the eight-lane pool, the whole facility got rotated, and there was a huge amount of time spent with WTI, working out the exact layouts of the pools themselves to fit on the site where we can still have the clubhouse, and still have a sport court, and still have a high dive, and now have a slide and have a kids' play area. So really, what ended up happening is the pools were really the hold point, and then beyond that, the layout is a function of us trying to fit two rows of chaise lounges for families along the north and south sides. So that's how we ended up at the dimension that we are. So we tried to explore what would happen if we did actually shrink the pool deck size, and it's really a function of just reducing the space that our members have to be able to have a larger quantity of chairs and comfort, is where we kind of arrived. So as we explored, I think we first wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the permeable surface is to reduce stormwater runoff, which we're effectively doing, and then also understand how we got to where we are today and from a layout standpoint. Is that helpful?
Did you even consider pavers where the sidewalk is?
We have, we have considered pavers where the sidewalk.
But that's not what's in our current packet?
Yeah, I think we actually put that in the table as an option. Yeah, so that would add 1,132.
Is that what we got tonight?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
So, in the packet that you have in front of you that I gave you out tonight, it should have that calculation in there. So that would be an additional 1,132 square foot reduction if they-
Correct.
Did the patio area and walkway to the parking lot in the permeable pavers.
I just want to be clear on something. So the pool currently does not have these basins, these catchment basins, is that correct?
Does not have what, I'm sorry?
Does not have the water trap, catchment basin, so there's nothing right now?
Correct.
So you're adding this?
Correct.
So the pool is now able to trap all this extra groundwater up to 100-year storming, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to enter.
Regarding the area that goes right by Blooming Bank, that long asphalt sidewalk or whatever it is, I can see that you're, when you do the rebuild, you're taking some of that property, but what is the village going to do with, is there going to be a new sidewalk placed there, a new concrete sidewalk, or?
No, there's sidewalk on the south side of the street.
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, I don't believe, because Blooming Bank doesn't have a sidewalk down it, because it's parkland, so I don't think the intent of the plan was to have sidewalk on the pool side. It follows down onto the south side of Blooming Bank and Scottswood. It, it follows down onto the south side of Blooming Bank and Scottswood.
Commissioner Pelletier, you had a question?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to know, how much did you reduce the pool deck area by?
I think we removed one foot eight, because when we shifted it, I think Sonia, weren't you guys, or Lauren, were you guys just emailing about that?
So, I'm.
And just while you're looking?
I don't think the pool deck area reduced too much, because they did just kind of shift it north, so it's up against the property line. So maybe about six inches and then the, you know, that like 200 foot of length there, but then you also, the deck then was also reduced, so we gained a couple of feet with that as well.
It's like a little over 250 square feet?
Yeah, Lauren just told me it's about 300 square feet.
300. And so just looking at the pool area, it looks like there is more space on the north side than on the south side?
Correct.
Is it possible to reduce the north side so that it reflects kind of the same dimension as the south as far as decking area? Just my concern is not actually impervious, it's the offset of the fence along Blooming Bank, because you're really reducing that offset, the existing offset is being reduced by almost 50%. So it's a, it's a very significant change to the vista along Blooming Bank, which is fairly important view shed for the village, I think.
Yeah, we, we actually explored that, which I believe is pushing, shrinking the pool deck by two foot five. Is that, that's the correct one, right? So we looked at shrinking that. The reason that is wider is because that's our main, we're hoping that that's really the main traffic circulation, because they're going to come out that little indent and then go along that way. So we're trying to add a little bit more wave to have the two rows of chairs and have the main pool circulation, so you're not too close. But it is, it is something that, that we, we could consider, and if, if it's something that is deemed necessary, I believe the board would consider it for sure. It still gets us our capacity, it's just reducing our pathway width.
Dave, would you mind repeating how much that would allow things to shift further back from Blooming Bank then? Did you say five feet, six inches? Is that what I heard?
Uh, it would be two foot five.
Oh, two foot five, sorry. So that would get us to eight feet, five inches off of the Blooming Bank property line?
Actually, I'm sorry, it's three foot seven. It's, it's three foot seven.
So that would get us to nine feet, just a little bit under 10 feet then, of open space then?
I know, it's a little confusing, because we had the previous one and then we moved it three foot three.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure it's a three foot three plus the three foot seven. Which would be six foot 10? Six foot 10 from what, what was in the variance of middle. And then that would increase impervious surface. It would be another 1,000 square feet roughly.
How much of the vegetation along Blooming Bank is being preserved?
I, I would guess most of it, I mean, the majority of what's on that is asphalt, which is on our property. Is that fair to say?
I'm not, I'm not sure that that would be completely accurate. I mean, there's several
Page three?
Shrubs. Because it really moves.
There are a number of.
I was going to pull up the photos.
There are trees within the property line, I guess.
There are, there are trees on their side of the property.
Yeah.
More so on their side of the property when you come further away from Burling right there. Obviously, everything that's kind of in that, that triangle that comes down at that turn, at that, at the intersection is ours, and there's a few trees that are in the parkway, but a majority of it is actually on their site.
Right.
I'm afraid.
I don't know that they're good trees.
Now, if you, if you can go back to that picture really quick, the one in the bottom left, it looks like you've got a transformer there.
Correct.
I think you're going to have to check and make sure the setback requirements on the fence around the transformer. Because the new location would probably be right up against it, and you might have to bump out a little bit.
It was definitely on the radar. These guys are taking care of it. Is that AT&amp;T?
So you actually have the tree locations here.
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
You can actually see the tree locations here. Reviewing the additional proposal to increase the distance from the property line to the fence to nine foot seven, we believe we can save almost all the trees and also clear the AT&amp;T transformer.
So that transformer is actually on the pool property, right?
Yeah.
But the overhead, there's some overhead power lines, those are just outside of your property line? Just outside of the pool's property line?
I believe so.
So we don't have to put words in the pool club's mouth. For each variation, we have to identify a particular hardship or practical difficulty. The request for fence slats, what's the hardship or the difficulty?
Yes, I would say that the hardship is a challenge. I think in this particular case, a lot of what we're trying to do is show an improvement upon what was there, which is existing non-conforming within a residential district. The need for slat is because it's a, a public, open, you know, a visible facility that's a swim club. So it's, it's a privacy issue that is, I believe, pretty common in, in swim clubs.
But what is the actual need for privacy?
What's the need for privacy?
Is that, I mean, that's not a requirement?
No, it's a, it's a membership, it's a membership need.
Okay.
Right?
So it's a preference?
Right.
Not, not to put words in your mouth, but I mean, I, I would argue that as, you know, as a private swim club, you know, there, there, it's, it's more than just a preference for privacy. It's, you know, you have, you know, children there, you know, you have, you have adults in swimsuits, you know, all day long. I think it goes a bit beyond a preference. It may not be a mandate, it may not be something that, oh, you absolutely have to have it covered up, and I don't want to get all, you know, moralistic in here and sound like I'm, you know, encouraging of some type of Taliban regime, but I, but I think it's perfectly, I think it's a very legitimate, you know, argument to say that this is in fact, you know, a hardship that we, that we want, you know, some privacy here.
I would agree. Our members would prefer to have privacy. Thank you.
Yes, but we have to go by our standards, and a preference for privacy is not a hardship or a difficulty. So, "Because of the particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. For example, the presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or non-conforming, irregular or substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features, or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner and that relate to or arises out of the lot and/or the structures thereon, rather than the personal situation of the current owner of the lot, or situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining material feature or significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining an architectural integrity of the lot or structure." So that's where we need to come up with, well, you need to help us identify that. That's why I'm asking the question.
I would argue that the presence of the existing and outside of RSC's control parking lots is a existing hardship outside of their control, since there are, there's the potential for individuals out of sight and like stalking situation, that is a security concern for parents with young children.
I would, I would absolutely consider it a security concern. I mean, that's an unmonitored parking lot that's in the back that doesn't get any street presence, you have people who could park a car there and, and just look into the fence without, it's absolutely a security concern.
That's what I was looking for. I had adjacent properties written down here, I just, we needed to hear it from you. Thank you.
Well, I don't know if we were, I don't know if this is the right time to make this comment, but I would argue that our code does not prevent privacy slating through a chain link fence. It only provides that one option is a chain link fence that should be coded. It does not bar privacy slating, and in addition, the spirit of the code is that you can have a solid fence there made of wood. So for me, I don't have an issue with, I don't consider that a required non-conformity or variation request. When we get to that point.
Do you?
I'm erring more on the side of caution with that one. The look of a privacy wood fence is a little different than the look of a privacy chain link fence, and so I was not willing to go out on a limb and say we were going to just start allowing carte blanche, chain link fences with privacy slating in them throughout the village.
Thank you.
Because I don't necessarily know that that was the intent of those design criteria that were put in under fences, if that makes sense.
Other questions? Questions for staff?
Well, I have a question, I don't know if it might be for you, Sonia, but getting back to the issue of the landscaping in the parkway there along the street yard, has there been any consideration of what the requirement that they must meet is and whether they, has it been addressed at all? Because I know that there's required to be at least two trees in the parkway. Given the length of the street yard or the parkway area in front of the street yard, it seems like it might be reasonable to ask for a few more trees.
I mean, it's a. It's a condition you could put on there if you wanted to offset, you could ask for them to do some trees
Right.
In the parkway to make up for what's being removed.
Right.
It sounds like a lot fewer will be removed if they are bringing that fence further back from the property line, especially obviously when it was just one foot off the property line, pretty much everything there was, was going. Three feet gets you a little more if they go an additional, even more than there's potential that they can maybe save all of them at that point, because that, then you're basically up to where that asphalt's path was.
There's also a pipe, a proposed pipe, it looks like, right in the parkway?
I'm sorry?
There's a proposed drainage pipe in the parkway? So that, probably the installation of that would impact all of the trees, not only on the private property, but on public as well.
That are in that area, yeah.
Yeah. But that's, it's the full length of the disturbed area, it looks like. Is that correct? There is a, I believe that's a drainage pipe along the full perimeter.
That might be our, not theirs.
That is correct. Right now, the, the storm detention, the stormwater pipe does run the full length of that, of that area that is to say that, that can possibly be moved. We just need to look into that with the reduction of the, of the site itself.
Right, so perhaps with the, moving the fence to be 10 feet off of the property line, that pipe might fit actually within your property?
Correct.
Are there any visitors that had anything to say or asked? Any final questions? Any final comments the swim club wants to make?
I don't think so. Any of the board members, you guys? I think we're good. Thank you guys very much, we appreciate your time.
Okay. Motion to continue or close the public hearing? To close or? Close? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So no more public comment from this point on? So we have to vote on the special use, and we have seven variations. Let's tackle the special use first. Someone would like to put a motion on the table, then we can have a discussion.
I'll move to approve the special use.
Okay. Anybody second? Oh, no. Yeah, second. It's been a while. Okay. So what are your thoughts on the special use? They currently have one, but since they're expanding a bit, we need to consider recommending approval of a new special use.
Most of this is replacing like with like. Most of this is replacing like with like and making improvements. I see nothing that expands the special use beyond what's, what's already existing here.
Well, let's go through the standards, not all of which need to be met. The proposed use is designated by this zoning ordinance as a special use in this district in which the use is to be located. I think that's met since they already have one. The proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located. C, the lo-
That's clearly no.
Well, if, if we-
Well, if the variations are granted.
Okay.
It, yes.
Just for clarification.
Right, we ran into that with Ames. C, the location and size of this proposed use, the nature and intensity the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets given access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located. Any issues with that one? D, the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. E, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining uses, and the entrance and exit drives will be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances. It doesn't really apply, because they're not changing. F, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood? Any concerns there? And finally, G, at least one year has elapsed since any denial by the village board and doesn't apply here. Any further discussion on the special use?
I would ask if the motion included the conditions in the staff report.
Yes, it did include the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you. Thank you.
And did we want to add any conditions about the deck as part of this? Making sure that it's permeable underneath the deck and that there'd be capping, so it's an open deck to allow for permeability under there?
Would we do that here? Would we do that in the individual variations that they kind of apply to?
We could do that for the variation. I mean, we don't typically put conditions on a variation, but we could do that as part of the impervious one as well if you wanted to.
Because there may be others that might come up.
Well, there's also the issue of the permeable front walk that we probably want to include that also.
Right. And decreasing the, the pool deck.
Sounds good.
So, okay. Thank you.
I would like to add as a condition, though, that there'd be attention paid to the landscaping in the parkway area or the pool property that borders Blooming Bank Road, and that there'd be consultation with the village forester, and any new plantings that are placed in that area are native species to our area.
So by attention paid, you mean to minimize removal of trees?
Minimize removal of certainly any native species, but just trying to establish a healthy community of vegetation. I don't know what the condition of some of, I think there's some pines there, and so if any of those are determined that they should be removed because they're diseased or old, that they be replaced with native species.
So two of you who made the motions, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
No, I, I, I'm not certain that it's the, that it's his board's purview to address issues of landscaping, and I, and I think that's where that falls under. I mean, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a fine idea. I'd like to think that the swim club would, would take that into account, and I'm, I'm sure they would because, you know, the concerns about privacy, you know, more, more greenery does protect privacy, but I'm, I am not comfortable making that as part of the special use, kind of shifting that onus onto them, and I, and I'm, I'm more concerned with saying that's really not part of our responsibility here.
I would disagree in that landscaping requirements are specifically a part of the zoning ordinance, so I think it is entirely within our purview to look at that. I was okay with the addition, because they are moving the fence back, there will be that nearly 10-foot area, and I believe it would be to the village's benefit to have landscape materials to further soften the appearance of this eight-foot fence that's going to be there. There wasn't really room for it in their initial proposal, but since it is being pushed back, I think that's something that would help to improve the compatibility of the overall design with the surrounding area.
I agree with that. And in addition, healthy plantings, particularly of trees and bushes, will help to absorb any rainwater, much more so than just some grass, you know, some regular turf grass. So that would help with the impermeability issue.
Extent of landscaping is standard D. Commissioner May, do you have an opinion?
No, I, I agree with Commissioner Hennigan. I think it'll, it'll help improve the design to soften it up a bit.
Commissioner Pelletier?
I agree that not only should we require landscaping within the setback on the property, but street trees should be added along Blooming Bank in order, again, in order to soften the fence that is violating fairly significantly the street yard setback.
Can we require the village to add street trees as part of a condition?
I think we may be able to, but I don't see why the village should do it.
Our landscape ordinance does talk about, at least for, for residences, the requirement of having a parkway tree. So there is, there is some precedent that it is in the, in the zoning ordinance requiring, I think, at least one parkway tree for, for every 50-foot lot, and then two if it's a larger lot.
So we could say a street tree every 50 feet or for every 50 feet of-
Certainly if there is a need for any of our parkway trees to have to be removed due to any of the utility improvements, our forester would be looking for them to be replaced as possible, obviously from our approved street list for street trees.
Mm-hmm.
I would support that requirement, but giving leeway for the village forester to approve the feasibility of trees in particular locations, since that's really public works call.
Further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Wait. So my understanding is Commissioner May did not accept that additional condition as part of this motion?
I was wondering about this, yeah.
Do you want to withdraw your second?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll go along.
And can we clarify one more time what this actual landscaping condition is? I, I understood it to the phrase attention paid to landscaping to mean, A, consult with the village forester and replace native species where they need to be, or replace anything that needs to be removed with native species, and they work to minimize removal of landscaping in general.
Well, I think to the extent that there aren't the adequate number of trees in the parkway that's off of their property, they also need to comply with that requirement, just like a residence, because they are in the residence.
Right. So could that be part of the consultation with the village forester?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and part of the consultation is that he's consulted as to the species that they're using, not just
Understood.
the number of, or the design of, I'm not talking about design, I'm just talking about.
Right.
Okay.
I'm good to go?
Good to go.
Okay.
All righty. Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhu? Oh, sorry. I didn't cross you off. Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's move on to variations. We have seven of them. Some of them are, as Mr. Pollard said, lumped together. What are your thoughts on how to handle these? Do you want to take each one separately? Do you want to pool some? Do you want to do them all at once? Want to take some out separately?
Is there anybody, any, that anyone finds objectionable that they'd like to discuss further? In which case we could pull them out?
I think we should consider pulling out the one for impervious surface and lot coverage, since that one had the additional conditions we wanted to add, but everything else, I think, could be lumped together.
I see Commissioner Matthews nodding his head.
Yeah, I'm just trying to read it on the phone.
And the fence setback, we had also additional requirements. Did you say that? I'm not sure if I heard.
The, the street yard fence setback had additional requirements as well. So perhaps if we took them separately so we could make sure that we're getting, you know, it's kind of as a checklist to make sure that we get all of the requirements that were discussed.
Okay, well, let's start with the impervious then. What are our general thoughts?
I would be in favor of granting the variation with the condition that they make the deck pervious per the ideas we had mentioned earlier.
I agree with that, and I would add to that having the pervious surface for the front walkway, as they mentioned in their, one of their tables. And also, also as they mentioned in their front table, they have a reference to vegetation and grassy area that they were going to, I think, perhaps increase some of that in the one table with the green highlighting. So I would add that also as a condition.
I think that was the increase, that was the increase that happened, that small increase from them moving the, the pool deck back a bit.
So to be clear, the wood deck would adhere to the engineer's recommendation of the eight-inch gap in the slats, digging down six inches, having the fabric and having the gravel.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion then?
Motion to approve the variance with the engineer's recommendation?
With the conditions that the engineer's recommendation for the wood deck and the adherence to the permeable pavers for the sidewalk and the increased grassy area in the street yard. Is that everything?
Yes.
The increased street yard to 9.7, or nine, what's seven? About.
It was, yeah, around nine something.
Yeah. Right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed. Who was the second on that one?
Commissioner Miller?
Miller, okay.
Do we need to talk about hardship? At least to identify what that is?
Jeez, thank you.
And maybe we can just do that once? If, if we can agree that the hardship applies to all, or whichever ones they don't, you know what I mean, but I think if we go through hardships once.
Thank you. We do need to go through the standards. It's been a while. Okay. As I already read, because of a particular physical, physical or unusual condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to, to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, the presence of an existing use or structure, whether conforming or nonconforming, irregular, substandard shape or size, exceptional topographical features, or other extraordinary physical condition peculiar to and inherent in the subject property that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience to the owner and that relate to or arises out of the lot and/or the structures thereon, rather than the personal situation of the owner, current owner of the lot, or situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from reestablishing, restoring, or maintaining material feature or other significant architectural feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot and structure. So how would we answer that one?
I feel like the, the shape of the property, the configuration of the lot is quite challenging in that it is long and slender, so that makes it hard to, you know, you have minimum widths for your uses, so that is particularly challenging. And it is an existing use. You do have to meet the existing requirements and expectations of the users, so in order to do that, they likely would need to go to a different site or a different location.
Other thoughts? Right, they would not really be able to redevelop if they adhere to the code. Okay. B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain. C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property.
Nice. I just have one question. Is, is the swim club a non-for-profit organization? Thank you.
The conditions, so it's not been created by anybody presently having an interest in the property. It was built over 60 years ago. Conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. We only have one swim club. E, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. Thoughts on that one? F, the granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. As Commissioner May said, they're replacing like with like.
So I will say on that point that the fence setback does alter the character of that use and, and therefore the character of the neighborhood.
I believe that if there were not the village parking lots immediately adjacent to that, at the same place where the fence is going to be located, it would have a much bigger impact, but given that you've got a commuter parking lot right there, it, I don't think it really, for me personally, I don't have a problem with that.
And just to be clear, I'm talking about the front yard or the street yard?
Yes.
Fence setback.
Yes.
I think it'll be a more attractive fence.
It will be a more attractive fence.
Yeah.
I agree with that. And it won't have privacy slats, right? It's, it's remaining open.
It'll be getting rid of all that asphalt there, which is not very appealing to look at.
G, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Nope? Okay. Any further discussion on the pervious surface one? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And the other one you wanted to pull out was the fence, fence height? No, fence setback?
Fence setback.
That's the street setback.
The street yard setback.
Yep. Okay. So would somebody like to pose a motion with a condition? Didn't you have a, who had the condition on that one? They're pulling it out because we wanted to make sure the change was made.
As well as to vote possibly separately on it.
I'm sorry?
Separately on it, to vote separately
Right.
on that variation.
Right.
So.
So this is where we want to address the fence setback increasing to the six-foot that they're showing us today, or that additional
Nine.
three-feet-ish, so that we get to that nine-something that they said if they shrunk the northern walkway area and the pool deck, correct? Because that was part of the impervious surface recommendation? Okay.
So how would you word that condition?
I would say you're, can I double-check the number on that, Dave? I think you gave us a number. Did we end it up at nine feet, seven inches total? Is that correct? Is that correct? So, I guess the condition would be that the fence would have to have a nine foot, seven inch setback from the front property line. Because what they have shown has been a one foot setback or a six foot setback. We don't have anything that shows that nine foot setback, so we should specify that in the ordinance. And this would be for the street yard encroachment of the fence? Specific variation, correct?
Along with height. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'm still not sure how to phrase it. Like you said, I haven't done this in a while. Motion to approve the variation with the nine foot, seven inch setback, is it that, or?
Mm-hmm.
That's what it is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion?
And does this motion, does this motion include the height, or are we doing that separate?
It's written down as it being the height also, eight feet in the street yard, so that, that part doesn't change.
Got it.
Further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
All righty, Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
No, and I just wanted to point out that it, to me, it did not meet all of the requirements of the variation, the standards for variation, so I can't in good conscience recommend approval.
Okay. And Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
All right, that is six, five one, so motion passes.
So the other variations are the rear yard setback, the sport court, encroaching into the sides, side yard and the street yard, they're not being allowed in the street yard, the deck encroaching into the street yard, the wooden deck, fence height in the back, and the privacy, fence privacy slating. Shall we discuss those and how the hardships or difficulties might apply if we haven't specifically already discussed it?
Well, one, one question I would have is, does the commission still support the need to have a variation for the privacy slating? It kind of doesn't make a big difference either way, but if that's a standalone variation and we could eliminate that, it, the way I saw it written, it didn't seem like it was part of the ten foot height requirement, but, uh, ten foot, quite, ten foot height variation, but I could have missed something.
Well, it goes beyond the tennis court, or the, goes beyond where the kids are playing balls, so...
Yeah, but I still, the way I read our code, we don't say anything one way or the other about privacy slating, so I would say it's not barred, so it's not a variation. We just reference cyclone fencing as an allowed type of fencing.
I defer to Director App.
I don't know if, yeah, if we want to include that, I mean, it's...
I would agree that there's some ambiguity there and some room for interpretation as whether or not that variation is required, because it does not specifically prohibit slating, but on the same hand, I don't have any problem with specifically including that within the actions that we're approving tonight, just to make it crystal clear what exactly it is that we are allowing them to do.
And then we can possibly address that lack of clarity in our ordinance, in case the intent was for it to be prohibited or against ordinance.
Good idea.
And, and I agree, I mean, Director App has acknowledged that there is ambiguity, but that, you know, to be better safe than sorry, it was included as part of the notice, so I, I think it would be good to go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, well, then I guess I would just request that it be put into the list of ordinance changes that should be considered at some point in the future by the Village Board, because I also don't want to establish a, a, what is that, a precedent that the privacy slats aren't, have to get a variation, so...
Agreed. So for these remaining issues, as Commissioner Pelletier described before, this is a strangely shaped lot. Encroachments are going to happen, if they're going to have their building, and the pools are likely going to happen. It's an existing condition. The adjacent properties are railroad line and commuter lots, so there are some difficulties and hardships associated with it. You guys have other thoughts on this? Then can I have a motion to approve the remaining five variations?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. I don't believe we had any conditions suggested for those.
Did we, did we want to add a condition to any of these regarding the pipe that is currently shown within the parkway being moved onto the existing property, or can we leave that up to kind of the engineer and the...
I think we might just need to leave that up to the engineer and Public Works to figure out how to best handle where that pipe needs to go and, and then get it to where it needs to connect to.
Okay. Final thoughts? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, so thank you everybody for coming. We are a recommending body. This will next go to the Village Board, anticipated at their September third? Third meeting? So, and they will make the final decision on that. So, again, thanks for coming. So now called to order public hearing, PZ 20-05, regarding 471 Selborn Road. Commissioner Marhul will be rejoining us, all other commissioners are still present. This is a public hearing to consider an application for a variation from Section 10-73A 6D, accessory structures in residential districts of the Village Riverside Zoning Ordinance to build and replace an existing garage less than three feet from the side and rear lot lines in the same location as the previous garage in an R1A single-family residence district. The petitioners are Bethany and Michael Smalaric. All in favor to open this public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public notice was published in the Landmark on August 8th and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Analyst Bowman.
All right, so the proposed garage, well, the subject property is in the R1A single-family residence. The petitioners are seeking a variation to construct a 280 square foot garage, fourteen by twenty feet, to replace their existing garage. The petitioners state that the proposed garage would accommodate modern-sized SUVs and vans, that the existing cannot, while maintaining relatively unimpeded vehicle access in and out of the garage, and minimizing the loss of green space on the property. The zoning ordinance requires accessory structures in residential zoning districts to be set back three feet from side and rear property lines. So the existing garage is 12.23 feet by 20.19 feet, and this does not conform to those setback requirements. At the northwest corner, that's a 1.93 foot side yard setback, and the southwest corner is a 2.17 side yard setback. The southwest corner has a 1.77 side, rear yard setback, but the southwest rear yard side setback does conform. So the proposed garage will retain the existing garage's side yard setbacks and current driveway orientation, but the proposed garage will extend east by 1.67 feet to go from the twelve and some change to fourteen feet. Due to the, due to that extension, the southeast rear, rear yard setback is going to decrease from 1.77 feet to 1.45 feet. So the building coverage and pervious surface coverage maximums are, will not be exceeded with this proposal, although they will increase. And there is no, it should be noted that there's no fence or similar sort of property demarcation on the side west lot line between the existing garage and the driveway and the rear yard of the neighboring property of 465 Selborn, but, and that there is a fence to the rear lot line. And if the variation's approved, the petitioner can submit a building permit to construct a new garage.
Thank you.
There's a series of recommendations.
I forgot to swear you in, so if you're going to both give testimony, please stand if you can, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. You can go to the podium, podium, please.
All right, my, my name is Mike Smalaric, and with my wife Bethany, we own the house at 471 Selborn. We've lived in Riverside for seven years. When we bought the house, we knew it was going to need to be replaced. The current garage was not built to any, to many codes, it's actually off the slab right now, the slab is cracked in half, and it's really just been used for storage since we've lived there. As we investigated replacing the garage, we, we knew it was not currently in code with the setback. The couple options to make it in code are to move it in its current location a couple feet to meet the three foot setback, which would make it basically impossible to turn the corner to get into the garage, or put it in the other corner of the backyard, therefore greatly reducing the grass in the backyard and putting a lot more concrete in there. And to us, it made sense to try to put it in the, in the existing location, adding a couple feet to make it a little bit wider, so we can actually put a car in there. Prior to us reaching out for the, to you guys for the variance, we did talk to our neighbors to see if they made reservations on it, and they all said they would, they would welcome us putting it in the same spot. I know there were no public comments that came on it, in on it, for it or against it, so I, I don't know if that's good or bad, but, but that's what we're really hoping to do, is just put it in the same place, a little bit wider, and, and be able to use it, and replace, which is an old and dilapidated and kind of embarrassing looking garage right now.
Okay.
When you say, "put it in the same place," you mean, put it no closer to your neighbor's property on either side?
Correct. The only change would be, because it'll be slightly wider, that the, the southeast corner of the garage would be in essence three inches closer to the property line than it is right now.
And that's just due to the geometry of the property itself?
Correct. Yeah, our property's not square, it's, it's the, it's slightly like a parallelogram a little bit, so it's not straight square, so the property line is on an angle, but the garage would be straight, so to speak.
Do the existing eave on the garage overhang the property line? It was hard to tell from the pictures.
They actually, right now, they currently line up with the property line. The, the concrete that the garage is sort of on is, is what is on the setback right now.
And garage eaves don't count against the setback, just so you know, I just...
That's good to know.
And since we received the packet, we still have not received, the village has not received comments?
We have not, no.
Just as a point of clarification, an eve is not allowed to overhang the property line, correct?
Well, if there are no further questions, we have a motion to hopefully close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
This seems to be a pretty reasonable request. The owner is keeping the, sorry, I'm looking at the map here, the west and the south lines of the existing garage, so they're not, they're not trying to push further, they're holding to the existing condition, and the, the widening of the garage is pretty reasonable, it's only an extra foot and nine inches or so. Yes, the variation in the, sorry, the setback in the back corner does decrease by about four inches, but as the rest of the garage is essentially built in the existing footprint, this is, this is a reasonable request.
I think the hardship here is, is the site itself, just the geometry of it and the placement of the house so close to the back that if you did meet the setbacks, looking at the site diagram here, it would be impossible to get a larger car into that garage without removing the back porch, it looks like.
I would, I, if no one else has any other comments, I move that we approve the variation request from Section 10-7-3A 6D for the 471 Selborn Road property.
Second.
Is that cool? Yep. Okay, let's go through the standards. I'm not going to read all of the first standards, because we've already heard them twice tonight, but is there a particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved, particular hardship or practical difficulty? Commissioner May kind of discussed it. Any other thoughts on that?
Also, the location of the existing house, the width of the property, the driveway is extremely narrow as it is at eight feet. I mean, we often talk here about, you know, ten foot wide driveways and how they're too narrow, so I think just the entire, the structures on the property, as well as the shape of the property, and the depth of the property require, justify this variation.
And the overall size of the property?
Yeah.
As I said, if they put it in their backyard, they would lose their backyard. Okay. The purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain?
True.
The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by them, by any person presently having an interest in the property?
Correct.
They bought it in that condition. The conditions upon which the petition of variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification.
I think that's true, because of the specific design of, again, where the houses, the width, exact width of the property, the cant of that back property line, I think, that's...
They're matching the existing condition for the most part of the existing lot, so...
Can you say that again?
They're, they are for the most part matching the existing condition of the existing lot that is specific to this property.
The granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located?
Yes, agreed.
The granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Doesn't look like it.
Correct.
Proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values... or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood.
It's a de minimis change.
Correct. But I'd like to add, I don't know if we can do this, the condition that the garage have gutters and the gutters be directed towards the interior of the lot rather than to the property lines? Is that possible?
Yeah, that would be fine, so long as the rest of the commission favors that.
Commissioners? Not hearing a lot of support.
What's that? It's often not enforced. The issue is that, the issue is that we should not be allowing gutter drainage to be directed onto the property line where it then ends up in someone else's yard.
Right, but do we, we don't require gutters on garages?
Sorry, say that again?
I don't believe we require gutters on garages.
And, I don't know.
We, it's not required in the code to have a gutter? It is a small garage. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable then with requiring that as a condition. And it's something that they...
Can you go to your microphone? Can you sit up, please?
Oh, sorry. It's something they may choose to do as an aesthetic matter because they're replacing an old garage, but I'm not comfortable, if it's not in the code, that, you know, we'd add that as an obligation, since they're replacing like with like.
That's fair.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
All right.
So as you heard, we are a recommending body. This will go to the Village Board. Will it also be for September 3rd, or maybe the second meeting in September, which should be the 17th, perhaps? So, but Director App will let you know. Thanks for slogging it out tonight. So next on our agenda, we have no old business. We do have new, we don't have new business. But we have information update on garages and driveway code amendments from the ad hoc committee discussing garages and driveways. Can you talk into the mic? Told you, I'm working for Riverside TV tonight.
Some of you may recall. Some of you perhaps don't. We went through a text amendment process regarding new regulations for attached garages and also to adjust our driveway regulations. That ordinance failed before the Village Board, and they created an ad hoc committee to discuss the matter further and make some recommendations. So staff had brought before the Village Board some things that we felt absolutely needed to be addressed based on the Planning and Zoning Commission's discussion on the matter, just to make things consistent and make things clearer. And then we also had some suggestions that, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission had talked about in trying to provide bonuses and things like that for encouraging people to do a detached garage rather than attached garage on new construction or with additions, things like that. So the ad hoc committee met a few times and made their recommendations, and for the most part, they concurred with staff's recommendations, which had been, you know, for the most part, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations as it related to driveways. One of the things that they were not necessarily on board with was switching to using a radius rather than a flare for the driveway aprons. So that's one thing that they thought a little bit more, you know, discussion should happen about that. And then if we do make that change, then that could affect what the maximum width of that, that apron would be depending on what we go with. So there was concern that maybe a radius wouldn't necessarily allow better movement onto it, and so maybe we would have more rutting of the parkway if we did a radius rather than the flare that we have now, which is, which is in the code. So that was one thing they were not necessarily in agreement with. Staff's recommendation had been to go with the radius because it would allow the preservation of a little bit more park, parkway space if we went with the radius curve versus the triangle flare. The other, I think, major thing that came out of that is they did think that it would be good to create some sort of bonus list for people doing a detached garage, but they also stressed that perhaps we should look at those bonuses being more about using impervious, using permeable surfaces or providing more landscaping. So that was kind of more their leaning than giving somebody like a building coverage bonus for, for choosing. They didn't seem to be as in favor of those kind of recommendations as maybe sticking strictly to permeability issues, green space issues, and providing bonuses for those. So Director Bailey was the one that was assigned to the ad hoc committee, so you have his memo before him that kind of outlines each thing. So I'm working on kind of updating the original text amendment that went before you to incorporate some of these changes. So that's going to be before you for a public hearing next month. So I just kind of wanted to give you a quick heads up on that, so you can see what their recommendations were and kind of have that background as we go into the public hearing for next month for that text amendment.
So our recommendation to change the code so that front-loading garages are set back five feet is no longer in that proposed text amendment?
That was not something that staff put forward as a must-have. That's what I put in as a potential recommendation for like a bonus or something like that. And so, again, with their recommendation, their recommendation wasn't necessarily about setbacks or building coverage bonuses. They thought focusing more on green space and using permeable pavers and giving bonuses for those to have additional building coverage space or impervious space for, to allow for that garage, so.
Is there more detail than what's in this? Because I don't understand some of the statements in here.
No. That's pretty much the minutes from the meeting.
I mean, what is it, for instance, under the driveway width? It says, it summarizes it, "Staff recommendation, ad hoc committee recommendation. Concur with staff recommendation, except to eliminate the reference to the taper alternative option." Does, what does that mean?
So when we were talking about driveways for attached garages, we had recommended that at a certain point, it had to taper.
And the ad hoc committee said, "We don't need the taper. It can continue all the way out to the property line." So it can be up to 10, up to 20 feet wide? The width of the garage up to 20 feet? And then just nothing happens after that? There's just no... So I'm just, I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just don't understand some of what's said in here because there's no, there's kind of a... I mean, functionally, would that mean it could be the width of the driveway?
They didn't necessarily want it to have to be at 10 feet by the time it got to.
Oh, it's the 10-foot issue?
My understanding of this is that the taper is still required, but you don't have to have the taper at 10 feet at the property line. You just have to be on your way to that taper.
Is there like a formula or?
Sure. By, by 30 feet from the face of the garage, you have to be tapered down to 10 feet, is how I read this. Is that how you're going to read this?
So there's just, so you still would have to get to the 10 feet within 30 feet, but there's just no reference to tapering to get there?
Well, you're still tapering. There's just no reference to having to be at 10 feet by the time you hit the property line. You could be at 12 feet at the property line and then 10 feet...
Maybe at the sidewalk.
A little bit further into the parkway.
Okay, all right. But there'll be further detail forthcoming. And was there any discussion? I can't remember. This was so long ago, to, to the facade requirement being less than 50% of the width of the house? Was that considered by the committee? I know you weren't even on the committee. It was at Bailey that...
No, they were, look, staff didn't get into reducing that number. I didn't say that was a must-have, but I did say that a must-have was going to be better defining the width of the facade, so that...
So did you sort of set the parameters for what they considered? And you said it wasn't a must-have?
The board set the parameters for what they consider. I went to the board and said, "Staff thinks that these are absolute must-haves that we have to address." And then these are other considerations that we can look at to try to meet that goal of trying to promote using a detached garage rather than attached garage. When we get to the text amendment, if the commission feels strongly that a five-foot setback, or that it has to be 49% or something for the width of, of the house, you know, you can make those recommendations as, as, as we go through the hearing.
But it just wasn't something that was considered by the ad hoc committee, basically?
But that's, yeah, no. They, I mean, that's information they had, but it's not something that they recommended.
So when's the next date that this will come before us?
At your next meeting, so that would be September...
23rd. Thank you. Any update from RTA?
We are trying to figure out some dates for a virtual workshop for the zoning ordinance update. One question that was asked is whether we thought it would be better to just have one workshop, or if we should try to kind of spread it over a few days to give better opportunity for people to be able to engage. I personally lean towards trying to have it on multiple days, but I was going to ask for, for your feedback on that.
So can you remind us what this workshop is, who it's for, and what they'll see?
What's that?
Can you remind us who will attend this workshop and what they're going to see and give feedback on?
So the consulting team will kind of go over the scope of the project and some of the issues that have been identified, as well as trying to get public feedback. So it is open to the public. So it is a public, kind of open house sort of workshop meeting. So anybody from the public would be able to attend, including the Planning and Zoning Commission, and obviously the steering committee for the, for the update.
It seems appropriate to spread it across multiple days, considering the current environment.
So.
And definitely good to offer a daytime and evening option if possible?
I'm sorry?
It would be good to offer both a daytime and an evening option if possible?
Uh huh. You agree?
That is what I was about to say, or was saying.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, everyone. See you September 23rd, if not before.